So in the absence of Linda, I'd like to call the October first select board meeting order. First things first, any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to approve the minutes of September seventeenth. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I would second it, but was I here when they want?
We do not.
No?
Oh, I guess I'll shut up.
Uh, I'll second. Need further discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Comments from the community correspondence, we have a whole folder of things. First one, you guys remember the meeting we went to at the GMTCC last year, it's the Vermont County Planning Commission is hosting another version of that, the second meetup for select board members, county administrators, and village trustees. The first meetup in April was was a successful networking event with officials from around the county sharing successes and challenges in their municipalities. They also suggested that similar meetups in the future would be welcome. Second event will draw on the topics discussed in April. Any suggestions for topics to discuss, to be discussed are welcome and will be added to the agenda. This is again, an informal gathering to be held at GMTC. Complimentary pizzas, hot drinks to be served during at six. Local planning commission staff will be available to answer questions. Uh, please note, this is a training and networking event. This is not a meeting of majority of our board members, individual council meeting, by notice is required. Regardless, attendees understand that open meeting law dictates that majority of its board members attend, that they will not discuss specific business of the board that at the time of exchange participating members expect to be business of the board at a later time. If the majority of the board chooses to attend, please make the point of not sitting together to avoid any appearance of conducting town or village business. The event is free, registration is encouraged. Welcome to register by contacting Manta Lianna. You can also contact Kasha. We need to RSVP by ten twenty-two. And the event is on October twenty-seventh.
If you don't want to RSVP, if you want me to RSVP, you're going to explain that and what sort of pizza you like as well as if you have any topics.
Also, on October seventeenth, a state government municipal day from seven forty-five AM to three forty-five PM in national life. Agency of Natural Resources invites you to participate in a day-long event, informational training to municipal, four municipalities, opening session keynote speaker. Sarah Waring, who is the executive director of the Northern Border Regional Commission. And networking opportunities. With Collins, Chris, Ron. This year, the event will be focused on preparing our cities and towns for the uncertainty caused by the changes being made by the federal government. In addition to A and R, the event is hosted in cooperation with the agency of Congress and Community Development, Land Use Review Board, Agency of Transportation, Agency of Agriculture, Food and Markets. Remote Emergency Management Management and several departmental organizations. Space is limited, free registration is required. There is a thirty-five dollar registration fee. Morning coffee, tea, pastries, and buffet lunch. To register, again, reach out to Michelle. The last thing in my bag of goodies is the Sheriff's Department report, and I'll pass that. While that's going around, we also have all in on it, get where I get that?
Yeah, you did.
Excellent. Uh, State Attorney General, or State Attorney for Vermont County.
Yeah, so um, hi, everybody, and it's so nice to see everybody here. First of all, I just want to let you know that I'm here for you, you're my boss. So if you need something, you have a question, uh, you have a concern, please reach out to me directly. You can email me, we'll call you, whatever's easiest for you. I'm here for you. I live over in Craftsbury, it's my neighbor. Um, so even though technically it's a different county, it's really close and I just want you to know that I'm available um, for anything that you need or any questions that you have. So for animal cruelty, um, one of my most important, I I feel something that's most important is the way that Vermont is handling cruelty cases for animals. We've had a slew of them. As Dean, I'll tell you. And it's been really horrific. Like, these are not just people who don't know how to take care of animals. These are people who are abandoning animals, who are neglecting obvious injuries and it, to me, this shows more than just a need for education. Um, well, we're really running into the biggest two concerns that we have, of course, money, we don't have any. Um, and stricter laws. So I was able to get the first jail sentence for a felony animal cruelty case last year. Um, I don't know if you heard about Trooper, but he was a pit bull that was basically left to die on the side of the road in Waukeg. Um, and his owner was able to get him out of an exception in her apartment lease because she said she needed a, like a comfort animal, right, as poor animal. So the doctors, they didn't know that she had done this before. And the last dog that she had, it was in, not as bad condition, but almost was able to be rescued by someone. They were able to convince her to give this animal away. And then the doctor allowed her to have another one, which is they didn't know the history. So the problem with that is there's no statewide abuse registry, which is so easy to maintain. I mean, some of the attorney general's office could do very easily, something that anyone could do very easily. But it's a way for us to protect animals from people who should not owe them. So that is one of my first pictures. Uh, we Vermont just hired a director of animal welfare and she's phenomenal. Her new visa. And she was hired to help organize animal welfare throughout the state to give municipalities um, an ability to go to someone and say, hey, we need help with this, we don't know what to do. I was like, do you have law enforcement, I don't think we have any help. The problem is that she was funded, that's it. She has no money to do anything. Uh, she doesn't have money to hire a vet, she doesn't have money to have like a triage center for the animals to go, who can rescue. So what I'm hoping to do is to get support from each of our towns to try to push the state to come up with two things. One is a state veterinarian who was able to go to the site all over the county or to work with other vets to do so. Um, to come out in emergency situations. Um, the problem is, is that right now, I've got a situation a few weeks ago that thanks to the goodness of a lot of arts, we had a vet come out and donate her time, hours of her time with about two hours' notice. Uh, we had animal control officers come out, we had, we had people, volunteers come out, we had animal rescue sites come out. All on like no notice, no money. They brought trailers, they offered healthy animals to vet these animals, but this is simply not sustainable for the long term. So the second thing that we need is funding to take care of these animals, of these animals. So those are my two primary hopes. Um, to push the legislature to get some funding for this. I mean, the legislature supported funding, safe injection sites and kitten. So I honestly have a problem with them funding something that would actually be useful. And I don't mean to get political, but um, to me, it seems like this would be a much better use of two million dollars. Um, so obviously reaching out to all of the townships instead of having all the weight be on you and your animal patrol officer and people like Michelle, who's, who alerted me to what happened. And alerted Dean to what happened. We have a lot of animals that are going to suffer, can't give a sleep. Um, so that's my request. I don't want us spending the money, I want the state putting money aside. They can do that through mandatory fines for people who are convicted of animal abuse. They can do that through a lot of different ways that I think are fiscally responsible and that are doable. Um, but it's just, I don't think it's sustainable for for people to be expected to donate their resources, their time, their facilities, everything over and over again, or to be able to keep these animals safe. I know that in Johnson, they had to euthanize an animal because there was no money to save for that animal. And to me, that's not acceptable. So I am really hoping for support with that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I'm not looking to like, to to come out and and be harsh on people. I really want to educate people, we want to give people the supports they need, we want to give people the tools that they need. But we also need to be able to make sure that these animals are safe. And are able to be adopted out. But we have the criminal law works now, which you probably all know is so slow. That unless an owner surrenders an animal, there's no way for the rescue organization to adopt out that animal and there's no way to ensure veterinary care is paid for because there's no one to pay for it except the owner. And a lot of times the owners can't afford to pay for it, which is why they're having to serve the animals. So unless we can get them to sign on the line to render the animals out, that leaves us in a limbo for up to a year. Yeah, so it's really, really hard. And the kennels can't keep taking care of them because they charge a certain amount every day. And if they can't adopt out an animal, this is so technically owned by the defendant, then it's just this catch twenty-two situation. So that's kind of why, do you, do you, I mean, based on your experiences, is there anything that you would suggest or add?
I just, I just feel that things are going to, you know, worse with the
Yeah, they are.
We need to figure out something now. Because like you said, as far as a deal that happened not very long ago, if it wasn't for the people stepping up and helping us. What would we have done?
No, dude, I, it was just a variable, honestly. Um, and it's not the way, you can't work, you can't run things patchwork. This doesn't work long-term. You know, I went, the economy worsening and everyone's really struggling to even, I mean, I mean, you know, I have two teenage boys, so we go through, I go to grocery store three times a week. You know, and it's costing me two hundred, three hundred dollars every time I go. So I really don't know how people are affording even to keep, I mean, all these animals from the other week, I couldn't afford to keep them, there's no way.
Everybody's pulled through the
Yeah, and all the shelters are full.
They're just not taking any orientates because they're just and and then the vet bills is just
It's, yeah, yeah, I mean, the vet, and our vet, she was so wonderful. She donated all of her time, her expertise, her, her courage, she came out um, to examine these animals because you can't wait until a couple of days later. We had one animal that almost lost a leg. Then had we had back here immediately.
Who was that?
Yeah, there's one animal that had to be euthanized, um, on scene, and so those kind of situations can't wait to get funding. So do you have any questions? You know, this is really such a dark topic, I'm sorry.
I think everybody's thinking the money thing is is so tough because, you know, I don't like the town and the situation, they're going to want the kennel.
Right, and expenses are, oh, it's priceless. Yeah, and I'm going to start making defendants, you know, instead of getting a court fund, I'm going to have them make donations to animal shelters and five oh one C corporations, but that also is just you know, it's where I can, um, and I just would like a sustainable source.
I promise I hadn't abandoned it last night. I got a call. Sheriff's Department. Although it, uh, above the store. I've had three calls.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, sorry. I've had three calls of the dog barking all the time. Come and find out, it was left about two to three days in the house. Bitches all over the place. And apparently, the owner came back and cleaned it all up by that time. I was there with the sheriff last night. The dogs were fine. They weren't starving or anything, and they had water, they had food, and so we just left it. But I, uh, I contacted the landlord. I think it's his responsibility to tell his tenants to keep their dogs quiet or whatever. Say this was a third complaint I had last week. And they think the dogs were just left there alone. Now they had a bed right up at against the window and the window opens, the dog was right there barking all the time out that window, so disturbed the whole neighborhood. We parked the guy and, uh, I guess, uh, Fred and the owner still, well, the owner of the apartment's there. It's going to take care of it because I got him out of bed last night. It was bad. So I don't know what they're going to do.
So what support to you? What support to you, Dean?
What's the what?
Support.
Support. What? Well. We've been pretty lucky. Any animals that I brought to the, uh, pound have been adopted or something. And that incident with the farm, I think that was wonderful. All those animals were taken out of there and well taken care of. I mean, that was, that was incredible.
Yeah.
But, uh, if I I've had a problem with loose goats up in East Still and, uh, I've been in the winter time, I had to deal with them up there and then I just, this, after this past week. Uh, where do we if we have animals we have to take out? And, uh, where, what, where do you, like, take a horse?
Where do you put them?
Right.
Well, that's what we need. That's exactly what we need. We need like a triage center.
And they used to have down at the animal rescue there, or what they call it down there.
They can't move that.
Yeah, yeah. They used to have a horse area there, but that's gone.
Yes, we saw that.
So, uh.
That's something I could potentially help with. Um, my sister and I have a, an equine therapy center. And so, uh, this is something Michelle brought to our attention. Um, and it is something that we would be interested in offering support in housing animals, but we are concerned about my house, so, yeah, cost of vet bills and care without falling else. Yeah, I mean, the most important thing I think is to get a surrender for the owners, honestly. Um, because I'm like, we'll give you the freedom that you need to be able to meet to to get that clear. In terms of cause, I don't know what to tell you for that, honestly. I mean, that's what we're looking for is a centralized, you know, fund that we can ask the state for.
We're also, because I know Louisville County is looking for another shelter because all of the tests are five, six participating towns sharing Louisville County, uh, kennel. And, um, it's, it's too expensive and they're not serving our needs. So, uh, we've approached Nikki um, because she potentially has a place to turn into a kennel that can maybe do kennel needs services and, and, and take in at least for the sound of maybe Westover or maybe the entire region. I don't know how big it is, but it's just in the very I see of seeing if it's even costly, if they can make it world cost wise, but
Yeah.
Are you talking big animals, showing me horses and stuff like that, that's something that is a possibility?
I think we, it's a three hundred acre farm, so we have a world of possibility.
Great. I just feel we're going to see a bottom of our business and the future is going to get worse. Sure.
I mean, one thing I'd love to see also is on town websites or resource page for owners, you know, it's like a way for them to be like, hey, I need some help. Without feeling like the big bad state attorney is going to come and prosecute me. Like, I mean, my first goal is to get these animals safe. And to help owners maybe educate owners as to what's needed, right? You know, so maybe if the town has been create just a little website with resources, like, hey, you know, NPL offers free food if you need it, or they can care for your animals if you have to go to the hospital or you have to go to inpatient drug treatment, you know, they can take care of your animals for a short time, but just a way for people to see like, oh, there's all these people willing to help us. You know, and I know Dean is then offering like to help people and educate them on how to properly take care of animals too. Um, I'd love to see that. I know that when we talked to Lisa, we had a meeting with all law enforcement of the county. And Dean and a couple other ACOs were there and we taught, we brainstormed and I know that because our county is so active and so proactive in addressing animal welfare needs. And there's a big question of the state to use our county as like a prototype. Um, and maybe that if it wouldn't be a, what did she say? She said maybe like the, the funding could come here and maybe the triage center might go further down south.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, but so I think that there's a lot of support from the state, there's a lot of support from the state animal welfare director. Um, I talked to our lieutenant governor, he is really in favor of it. He's in favor of making a stronger law on registry. So we've got people listening. So, you know, I'm not asking the town to exert any more fines, I know none of us have it. I know none of the towns have it, we're all struggling. But just even a unified voice would be really phenomenal.
You know, that, um, in, I keep mentioning Colorado and they changed the law for, to prevent it. Um, and animals no longer property or the party. That would be amazing.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's the other problem too, you know, um. I mean, the felony statute is really limited and there's, there's cases that I think should be felonies that I can't charge as felonies. Abandonment I can charge as a felony because that involves cruelty, I think, and so I will charge it, so, 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 so. Generally, black to some of us to minors. So, you know, and I'm not saying that the first, the first thing we should do is, is make the laws tougher, you know, but I think that we also need to make people understand that they are responsible. You know, whether it's
They just, rather than, they're more at the job of help, rather than, but it's so bad that we have to go there and go, oh my God, you know, this is a bad situation.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. For me, it's about the suffering, you know.
Um, maybe Dean and like, so people together listed resources and then they click, like, before we put it out on the website, kind of run it by everybody, but that's a good start.
Yeah, and, and what your constituents want, right? Like, what do they need? What are some stuff they need? Like, do they, like, I had a case come in that, um, this guy stole a bag of dog food. So I reached out to our restorative justice center. I was like, hey, that looks to me like he needs some dog food. Can you just say with him, I'm not going to charge him for this, you know, yeah, we'll get him to pay that store, but let's get him set up with NPL and because they have a program that they will give you dog food, you know, so let's get him the resources that he needs, right? Because if you're stealing dog food, it's not for fun, right? It's not like you're stealing stuff for your own pleasure, it's to, to help a creature, so.
Rescue, rescues should be doing this, that sort of thing, helping people with food if they need it. That sort of, and I know, like, Friends for Life.
Yeah.
They're great, they're awesome. They've been helping people get animals fixed.
Yeah.
Yeah, real fast. Stuff like that, you know?
Yeah.
Justice for Dogs, same thing, if somebody went to them and asked, hmm, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to make sure that they have it.
Yeah, I mean, what can I do to support you? Because you know that being a select word is, you fall into your job and it's definitely not one that you get a lot of gratitude for. It's almost as bad as school board, I think that one's hers. But, but, you know, whatever I can do to support you, you know, not make it less complicated, I'm happy to do it. Well, I mean, we kind of touched on it earlier, but I guess my biggest concern is are there any protections, uh, against liability that you can offer? Yeah, I can talk to the director about that and see what she can, she can suggest in the legislature. I mean, I think, I think that surrendering that would be the best way because then you are in charge of animals and being careful of them. You know, is, so you're advising that, like, we should not take possession of any animal unless the owner surrenders? I can't advise that, I'm not allowed to give legal advice. Okay. But I think that that is the best route to go, so that the animals aren't in the building, you're not in the limbo, you know, so that you're able to make decisions. I mean, obviously, if there's an incident circumstances, animal is an emergency situation, that I think
I think nine times out of ten, people will surrender
Yeah, I think so too.
Rather than, you know, they're going to worry about, like, the charge if I don't walk, bring this, you know, so that's the best thing to do, which is just to try to
Yeah, and sometimes I am going to charge them even though they agree to surrender, um, but I will charge them with less than I would. Yeah. But yeah, I can try and find you that answer. If you want to give Dean your contact information, I can, you know. That's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I'll see what I can do for you, so your fees are saved. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I have a barn too, and I've offered, there's an emergency, one can go there, but it's probably not a good idea since I'm a prosecutor to be housing some of these animals, but and you know what I mean? It's like, if there's an empty space, you just want to be able to offer some help. Yeah. Anything else? I want to take a paper. And my office number, just so you have it, is eighty-eight, seven, nine, four, five. Um, since you're just the select board, I'll also give you my work cell, which is eight oh two, seven, nine, eight, four, four, eight, three, six. And that's, it's on right here. That's with me, it's
I, I got, I got her.
Yeah, and Dean's got it. So if you have an emergency, even if it's not animal welfare, obviously, if there's an emergency with safety or you need to get through to the police or whatever, you know, or you just have a question, just feel free to reach out to me. Okay, all right, we have something for you.
How are we a little bit late?
What?
Nothing big.
But it's from the heart.
Tigger, obviously.
What?
If you remember Tigger, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
She's been
Are you a doctor?
I want to, if I can't find her the perfect home, I'm, I'm she's getting harder, has a big kind of a pet. But, uh, like, trying to take her much as I can to me, and I socialize her a lot, pay her some words, but she's been on some way.
Good.
You'll be surprised. She's good. With the dog, no. It's past weekend. She already made her own money.
Oh, my gosh, can you open it? It's out of here? Yeah, all right.
We can't for money.
Okay, yeah, oh, damn.
Actually, great.
So wonderful, if you could be some news. Really like that, because we're actually just doing this.
Say that we appreciate everything you do, we're lucky to have you, for sure.
And there's, there's days where I feel like I give up, like, I just, I can't. You know, like, the defendants keep committing crimes, I can't believe about it, our status is not against, you know, accountability, which we were talking about. Like, it gets really frustrating, so. Thank you. And we have a new judge in the county, his name is Justin Dyer, who's a principal. And he's really wonderful. Um, he, he listens, he reasons, he really thinks through things, so I've got an ear there, which is really great. And he was right in the white knotty, so I think we've got a really, a good, good leader there to our team. So, uh, these two are amazing, just great. And then he saved so many lives, I mean, so many lives he saved. And it's just incredible. He even offered to pay for some of the vet bills, with the, and his most resource.
My enemy is not given to, for all of these.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the thing, it's like, no one thinks about that, all right? It's like, we have this living being that now costs money and it's not cheap. So, yeah, so thank you.
Good to do, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
That'll be October.
That's a little worse.
You're there. And Steve.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, I got a little side note, I got ahead of myself. Comments around the community correspondence, I think we have some beyond time that I have something to say.
Hello? Ron. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. My comment from the community is, and I've been very pointed about this on several occasions and learned the other night when I listened in on a school board meeting that your new wastewater system still hasn't answered my question about the, the, uh, impact on the water system at the school with their new leach field. Every time I've asked the question, there's been a, well, we're working on it, we're, you know, we have people you know, and they still keep moving forward with their program. And then learned the other night that they've got to get drills in there and do some more drilling because they still don't know if it's safe to put a system there. I made it very plain to them the other night that I felt that this whole thing should stop as far as the school part of it until they know for sure. And I'd just like to go on record with the, with the select board. I want the select board to know what my stand is on it. I've been very opposed to having a sewer system on the school grounds from day one. You know, and then to learn that, that what I've asked every time that this has come up, you know, they've kind of jumped around the subject. Now is, is, they've got to go back in and do more drilling to to answer the question. They don't, they didn't have the answer, they still don't. And yet it seems like they're still going forward with putting the system up there.
The only thing I can say, and, you know, I'm not a, a member of the wastewater board or anything like that, but I I do know that the design that's in place is a, a state-approved, state-permitted design, um. That's, that's all I can say and, and I'll be sure that we pass your comments along with the wastewater committee.
Right, and I appreciate your answer, but that's the same answer I keep getting, is it's a state-approved, state-whatever design. And yet they still, and they admitted the other night, the engineer did, that they didn't know for sure that, you know, that it was safe yet. They've got to go in, I guess like, uh, this weekend, they're going to have drills coming in to do drilling to find out. You know, it's just, it, it, to me, it's putting the cart before the horse. You know, it's, it's pushing forward before you know that there's a place to go. So that's my comment on it, and I just want to go on record with the select board as well as I have with the school board that very opposed to this, have been from day one.
Well, thank you for your, thank you for your comment. Must anybody else have something to add?
Uh, my guess is, part of his answer is a geologist.
Uh, my guess is, is part of his answer is a geologist, they need to get more data with their model. I just let's blow the ground once you get your model, well, for sure, yeah. And then, of course, a lot of permits before they get there. There's all these permits they gotta go through. If one of those permits and stuff comes up for the state. Besides, they get it. Yeah, they're gonna get all this stuff for permits, then they're gonna go through a forty five day comment period and all that, so. So you get a lot of eyes looking at all of this to wind up before they even get a permit. So. This is why they have a geologist for the state looking at it.
Yep, and I I won't speak as an authority on this, but it was my understanding that they had done all of that. And that the permit existed the way the state has signed off on the wastewater permit. Uh, for a municipal system, but I guess I don't, I don't have that information.
They're working on it, they're still working on the details on that, but they won't know till. You won't get a proper permit. Till actual, it gets it to later on, that's that's forty fact day. Public period, people can comment on it, you know, when that, that I know, but. Part of all the historical stuff, they gotta get the archaeologists on this, all of all this other stuff.
So Keith, it sounds like there's gonna be a a forty five day comment period where you'll you'll get to make your opinion heard in state as well.
Hey, I appreciate that, but, you know, it's like I said, I, from the time that this started before the vote. I've asked this question over and over and keep getting the answer, well, we're working on it, we have this one looking at it. And then, in listening in, when the the wastewater. Committee was before the the school board the other night, kind of an update type thing. And the engineer from Stone. Was commenting, and they've got to bring drills in, and they're bringing bringing them in on the weekend, so as not to. You know, infringe on the school itself when it's in session. But they've got to bring drills in and and do more drilling, because they don't have the answer. You know, it's, it's, seems to me like. They're moving ahead way too fast. You know, they're. It's a hurry up because, oh, we've got grants that we've got to, we've got to beat a deadline on. You know. It's uh. If you go in there and you contaminate the school's water system and. Even contaminate the fields up there, it's just, to me, it's a lost cause, it's. Not a good situation, but that's my opinion. But I wanted to make my opinion known to the select board, and I've already made it known to the school board, so. Yep, thank you.
I'll give you some preliminary samples for that, because I was wondering if there's such an issue now. If all the wells around that place have anything from the current school system. If there's some other problem that would be incurred for the current school system, not just a new one.
Flatiron gets their water.
It would show up in all springs, wells down there, if there's a problem.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my response will be, I'm gonna trust that the engineers will pump the brakes if they realize that it doesn't. It doesn't work, but.
I hope they'll get the permit if it doesn't.
Right, state will have to put it stop. When is this forty five day comment period?
When that permit, when the state gets ready, when the state gets done before they get ready, not sure when. But they'll have it cleared out of public notice, and everyone can comment on it. Like everybody's water permit if they ever do.
And you're you're on the wastewater, right? So when you learn when that is, can you make sure that we are made aware? That way there we can pump that out to everybody else that has has an interest in it. You know, more voices is always better. Alright, so moving on, we have an audit for workers' comp and transfer station income, we've got our lovely town clerk.
So I emailed you the um transfer station, Kurt, I'll get you a copy. This is the audit, and I just want to, this is the um. Information that's the most important. So every year, you know, we. Take workers' comp and then we get an audit. And uh we estimated, um, uh, as you can see, the two thousand twenty four estimate was not that far off from what was audited. Problem is, is, and so we have to be a little more careful this year. We moved some of Michelle's salary onto highway. And if you look at the different rates per hundred, base rate per hundred. It's a huge difference from administration to highway. So when that happens, um. We pay more. Solid waste, that's because we hired a a second person full time to help Silvio. Um, because we had more trash coming up there. And um that. I will take responsibility for it because I put in the payroll for that, but at the time, we were doing um. We were having uh corrections help us in two thousand and twenty four. And twenty five, we moved over to hire based full time for the two days. Um. The libarians, it's just a tad different, so it's not that big a deal, and patrol officers, same thing. And then municipal employees, that I think that had to be litigation. And so, but the biggest one is the highway and the public works. So by moving um that amount over, we basically paid. It was seventeen thousand, and um we had. Already paid twenty six, so that left us with thirty eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty seven cents we have to pay workers' comp. Because of our changes. Three thousand eight hundred forty dollars and thirty seven cents.
So I I have a question. And it probably is a really dumb question.
Probably not.
We're about thirty thousand over on our estimated for highway, and we're about thirty thousand under on our admin. And while it was highway. Department budget funds, whatever, that paid for Michelle.
No, Michelle's salary paid for highway.
Michelle's salary.
Select board, I believe you proposed moving those funds over to the highway program last year when we. Separated off, because I didn't take health insurance. The original budget was sixty thousand dollars for something, you you're saving like twenty, twenty two thousand for not giving health insurance. So last year, when we set that money aside for the highway department, higher that the. The flowing before twelve thousand dollars was permission. Um. We, the board voted to move the funds directly over to the highway.
So let me simplify my question, this two forty five, six fifty, that directly paid for people that were conducting the business of a highway public works. Okay.
Four people. Three full time and one person. Yep, and so that's where our. Um, as you can see, I estimate every year, and I estimated four hundred nineteen thousand. Based on my categories I had at the time, and it came in just a little bit over. But the problem is the rate, the rate is so much different for admin versus. Manual labor, I guess you could say.
Yeah, but it's not as though there's an error anywhere.
No, 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 it's just, so I I'm just saying, maybe going forwards when we. Budget, we should budget. But that's, I just wanted to explain to you, I mean. They explained it a lot here, but I wanted to just be um, make it simple, that that's why we're having to pay more. And if we're going to continue to have that fourth person. We should um estimate it under highway and not something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, that's my whole thing. And the transfer station, um, I just, I sent an email out, basically, um, I'm negotiating with Casella. To get our four hundred dollars per haul down to two ninety. We just have to do a little bit of movement around of our containers. And the other thing was, we will not be getting the same containers back, we will be utilizing some of their containers. Which I have no problem with. Um, and so if they don't have to bring back the original. Dumpster. Then they will not have to make that what they call the um. They can bring up an empty one, take the full one, not bring back. See, they were just taking the full one and bringing it back. They don't have to do that, they can bring it the first time, an empty one, so they're not coming back. Except if they get another dumpster, we empty, like this week, we dumped, we dumped all three. So they were able, but we have to move our bulk one to the third position, because they also had to move the bulk one before they could get to the other two. I don't know why, Mr. Sweet never had that problem, but they do. So we are moving our bulk to our recycling place, garbage is staying the same. And um the bulk area will now be recycling. They are going to implement this plan pretty soon, and they'll let me know, and I will go up with um. Someone who will help me move the signs and the chains. So that's where we're at, and we're hoping that this will lower our costs, so we won't run the loss.
You thinking that one ten hall is gonna be enough to fill the whole one?
I'm hoping. And I thought I lost our comp, our compost hauler, but I didn't, so we're good there. It's been a scary week.
Are you going to increase the amount on that? The compost?
Uh, well, that is something we can talk about at a later date, but I did uh, all around, everybody's a dollar. So if we do go off, we, you know, I would say we wouldn't, shouldn't go up more than fifty cents, and that's really not gonna get us much more. Um, unless we want to kind of charge more, and then people will go outside with the compost, but, I mean. And we did talk about moving compost into the stockade. Um, but our mayor's gone, that's the good news, we have, and hopefully he doesn't come back. But nope, that's my report. I don't wanna hold up the budget, people.
And next thing is the uh budget hearings, gonna hear from Jim, fireboard. Am I proposing to keep it the same as last year?
He's gonna get an assistant.
Okay, uh. Yes, next would be, would be you, Mike.
I'm the same, I guess.
Both, or do you wanna consider the animal? Help, just note that we had dropped it down. From eight fifty salary we were stipend to one hundred, because we thought that we were gonna do it to that. From the, like the select board would be doing the home officer role. Um.
Oh, yeah, I see, yeah, well, we're not on that yet.
So sorry, you're doing animal, okay.
Yeah, that was quite a drop, I don't know what the reason that was.
I feel like we need to do, increase our unplanned animal boarding costs because it's at eight hundred. And we're already at over a thousand, and it's so early in the year. I think that cost needs, until we figure out a solution, that cost should go up to at least fifteen hundred. Cause we need it every year anyway.
Yeah, that's a big excuse, too. What's the feeling on on boarding? I mean, how were a lot of things in the year and all that?
Um, I've been talking to Alex from Hyde Park and um Brent from Warstown. And they're still trying to find a place, but I told them, I've just put um Alex in touch with Nikki. Um, to possibly. Uh, have a a joint place, or then maybe we just don't sign with them, Nikki's willing to do it just for the town, they'll cut. Um, maybe we just sign with Nikki next year. It's just that we could flower it if we each each town pays five thousand dollars, and um. I don't know that, you know, so they get thirty thousand dollars if the shelter open, so it's just. More beneficial to the the shelter owner to do a flower, town flower. But that's still up in the air, it's hard to find a place.
So just to make sure that I understand, the health department, uh, as your health officer, we're a level fund that. And then animal control.
Wait, can we go back to health officer, are we level funding it at four hundred or not enough to be fifty again?
You tell me.
Oh, that's uh. I haven't had too much work on the health end so far. Moving on after a while.
Keep it at four hundred. Are your mileage stipends okay? Are you exceeding your mileage stipends?
No, well, no, I don't think so. It's so sporadic that you don't know. You don't know uh what's coming next. Hopefully my calls are right at dinner time.
Yeah, whenever I have it, yeah.
And uh I can go two weeks without anything, and all of a sudden, three or four things come in at once, so. It's really hard to to predict anything. Like that TV show, uh, Pawn Stars, you never know what's gonna come in the door.
Well, the question here, we're considering increasing the animal control funding.
Uh, so it sounds like, or what I'm hearing anyway, is that the salary and the mileage for animal control, we're considering leaving those level funded. Uh, boarding, I have, that we're gonna revisit that once we have a little more information, because there's a lot of, lots of things going on.
I'm just putting it down for five thousand right now.
Right, because you know we, we're gonna at least need that. And then.
I don't know what we had the past years, I don't know. When we caught some things getting worse, they probably are.
Uh, from twenty four to twenty five, we had a six thousand dollar dump in our ACO budget, so.
But that was because of five thousand, right?
Right, yes.
And I also think with more, it was a little lower, because Dean paid for some more of the costs.
I drive a erring aside of. Yes, you're charging the boss and he's concerned because the situation is gonna get more volatile and expensive. And it's a pain in the ass job on a good day. And it's uh.
Another ball of a bull, for your way, that poor bull, charred to death.
But the one that's tied on town lane.
Yeah.
Yes. I have.
So whatever we're considering increasing, I I think we should have considered. An increase on that category, because it's. This is gonna be a statewide problem, not just ours. And it's, again, it's a thankless job, thank you for doing it, but you was a man, but it's a.
Now that you said thank you, it's not a thankless job. It's not a thankless job anymore, you just thank it.
Just to make a liar out of yourself.
One of my main complaints is people unregistered their dogs. And I calls, I don't know how many people. I probably got about two calls back, left the message, never called me back, I've done it twice, and. Or you just can't go barging in there, and, you know. It's almost you run by. People complaining.
Yeah.
It's what we do, we just can't go around.
The corner, I'm at the dump. Oh, over right next to the corner, I'm at the dump.
Yeah.
True aside, I think some of these people should be treated at least cruelly as they treat their animals, but we don't have any in January. Unhoused, chained outside. I just, we get animals. It's not cheap to keep them, and take good care of them. But they're family, it doesn't matter that they're a dumb animal, so-called, they're family, and you gotta take care of them, whether it's livestock or pets. If you're gonna have them, take care of them, or we don't have them.
Oh, I hear the excuse, oh, I can't afford to register my dogs. I said, well, if the dog had a. Something happened to it, you'd pay the jet, the vets four or five hundred.
Thousands.
Yeah. There are thousands of them.
Yeah.
The problem, yeah. That way you come up with that, but you can't come up to fifteen dollars to register your dog.
Well, then they don't have the animals, huh?
Yeah, well, what are you gonna do?
That, that, really, I, it's just, yes. For being too humane about this in the wrong way.
And, and so the other thing that I heard too was that the unclaimed animal boarding, suggesting bringing that from eight hundred to fifteen hundred. Bringing the unclaimed animal boarding costs from eight hundred, which is what we budgeted last year, to fifteen hundred this coming year. Yeah, okay. So, so, okay.
That was looking a little better later for, we finalize what we got.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would, I would ask that, once we get a little bit more pieces to the puzzle, we, we here here, animal control officer budget again. Just to finalize some of these numbers. Yeah. Okay, well, good, two easy ones and one pretty easy one.
Do we have to vote on figuring?
Nope, no voting, yeah. It all happens.
Well, by the way, like, it's, I, it sounds like I'm fairly biased, let's say. Last week, my dog ate my dentures. Yeah, I walked up the next morning and just sat there and said, why? I thought they weren't in my mouth at the time, but I mean, it was just.
Having a dog about six or seven years and. I gotta, you know. German Shepherd, water collar cross. Mostly German Shepherd, it's two smart dogs, smarter than I am. I was in the woods the other day, I had my sandwich, but I just set it down to get a drink and pull me breath.
They're all in the woods and he ate them all.
He is a smart dog.
But he left to your teeth, though.
You got a what? All right, well, um, I guess that brings us to, oh, let's move to speed. Me and, I'm assuming Mark. Uh. So over the course of the last, I wanna say year or so, the planning commission has been working on the uh. Updating the town plan. The town plan uh becomes out of date, I think March. Uh. So what we're hoping to do tonight is to introduce that we have, the planning commission has finalized. Uh, our work on it and we would like the select board to take a look at it. Take our work. Have any edits or comments or any information that you guys may have. Ready for us for the next meeting. And where for us to stay on schedule, uh, we've got to have the select board's approval. Leave it was next meeting, so that it can go into the public comment period, so that it can ready for our march. I'm leaving, adopting. Give it a very tough week, I will see to it to get our copy, uh. Mark, Tori, you guys emailed those out, yes?
Yep, we emailed them um in advance to Michelle and I believe she also distributed them. I'm happy to reforward.
Yep. Um. Yeah, we'll make sure that you get our copy. Anybody else wanna print one? Anybody else wanna print one?
I think so. Actually, you can just email it. Sorry, the internet works occasionally, I'll try later. The phone rings, the internet goes down.
It should have been emailed already.
I did, I emailed it, when did you send it, Tori? I think you emailed it back to me.
Uh, I believe it was last Thursday.
Your Friday, I think.
It's probably, yeah, there are.
It's there, yeah, I sent it last Thursday or Friday.
My problem, I get charged twenty-five cents a sheet.
And LCPC could also drop off some printed copies if it would be helpful.
Not even charged, but ten, twenty-five cents.
I can print the story, but it just sounds like we need one.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, do you guys have anything you'd like to, to add to my short little word? Feel like town planning can speak for itself.
Um, I'll just add that the planning commission has been reviewing. The plan since May of twenty twenty-four, so. We've been at it long and hard. Um, there was a table at the barbecue that had flyer that Mark helped make that summarized. Some of the updates that were incorporated, I thought I would just highlight a few that you might notice in reviewing the plan. Um, some new housing targets were incorporated um to comply with the new Act one eighty-one. Um, there was a pretty substantial overhaul to the health and wellness chapter um in partnership. Under review with uh Lemoyle Valley Health. Um, some bike and pedestrian projects were highlighted, um, the enhanced energy chapter. Uh, was updated as well to um maintain that status and substantial deference under the section two forty-eight process. And some new flood resilience actions were called out in various chapters across the plan.
And we're meeting next, the next select board meeting is um for a comment period.
Yes, um. Happy to take any that folks might have at this point, but the plan was to come back at the next select board meeting to review in more depth with everybody. Take comments, questions, et cetera.
What Mark is saying.
Yeah, everybody, little light reading.
I'm sorry, was that a question for me? I couldn't really hear it.
Yeah, yeah, and uh, where are we, your planning commission meeting is meeting on the sixth, correct? It's Monday?
Um, I believe Jim had canceled October's meeting, so the, the next. Town Planning Commission is November third. But. I can follow up, you can confirm.
Okay.
Tori, this is Dolan, if you could. Let me know when you find out, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um. And, you know, on behalf of the select board and the planning commission and all the other hats that they wear, thank you guys for. Holding our hands through the last. Twelve thousand years of town plan updates.
And everything.
And everything else, the list goes on. Uh. Okay. Moving on to Michelle.
Okay, um. And asking on behalf of Pet Arts Collaborative uh to apply for an R A A R P agent grant for twenty-eight hundred dollars, no cost to the town. Um, this grant will, is, is asking for uh money to bring in the. The band and dan- the concerts and the dance portion, concert dancing and uh open dancing. Uh, sort of to subsidize bringing in those bands, we'd like to host a. Saturday, a winter Saturday series, and so once a month. We'd like to bring in bands, country dancing over at the town hall. The bands will cost us roughly eight hundred dollars per event, and so we're asking for four half of that. Uh, in this grant, uh otherwise we'd have to do donations, like donations would have to, we'd bring up to cover that. So just asking for permission. To apply for like that grant. Twenty, twenty hundred dollars. And then I'm asking the select board to sign a letter and support of what applying for these funds. Could I drop it to Michael now?
And again, no comment, yes.
Yes, correct.
Any thoughts, questions, comments, comments? It sounds good, good. We, so we wanna make a motion?
We'll make a motion, we. Why they. Sign the letter and. Read the uh grant.
One second. Excellent, all of those in favor?
Aye.
You look at me like, oh, I did forget something, sorry. I was supposed to ask, we have any further discussion, we didn't have any initial discussion, so. Any further discussion? Not with the eyes out on the show.
Um, just wanted to point out, they finished shingles in one day, I hear they did a phenomenal job, so. The, uh, the side of the, the south facing side of this room and for this extension. Has been completed for the shingles. Uh, they also came out and marked all the utilities and then they dug the line. Dug up the, the asphalt and the line now, um, the electrical is now running to the box over there. Fairly certain, I mean, I've asked that they will be replacing the asphalt or couching it once they're done with everything. So they're moving pretty quickly, I expect that they're gonna be installing panels fairly soon. Um. Uh, oh, and at the same time, I asked, uh. Not Jared. Mercy or, Jamie, Jamie Mercy to give us an estimate on the library, snowbar, stuff that's back to me, labels. Um. I submitted the final report for better roads, which was the uh, the culvert that we replaced on Elmer Pond Road. The work, uh, roadwork we completed, we received, I think. Sixteen. Eighteen thousand, something, you know, fourteen, three. We completed the to- total project for fifteen thousand four hundred fifty because uh Dylan and the group did the work themselves. Uh, the town actually was for three thousand ninety dollars. And so we should receive uh one thousand seven hundred sixty from state. Um, the Royal County Sheriff served. The uh junk violation to the property on Flatiron Road. Uh, if you recall that we had attempted to mail. The violation. The warning letter, I guess, it's not actually a violation, it's not yet been issued, but the warning letter. Uh, via certified mail and it just kept acting back to us, so. I asked the sheriff department to actually serve it and they, they completed that. Um, so I will follow up and, so they, they served it on the twentieth of September. We'll follow up in thirty days before we issues and, and to see if anything has been done and then we'll issue a citation. And start that process. Um, the homeless person living in their car. If you recall, I spent about ten hours talking to all of the, the human service agencies. Um, figuring out what our best options are to move this, to get this person help before winter sets in. And at first, at first, this person had agreed to accepting help. Uh, I. Set up an appointment with Catstone and arranged for transit and everything and, and that morning, the person refused to get to go. So we are back. At this point, I feel like the select board and, and I have done everything in our capacity, if it we have. To. To get this person help and they are refusing it, this person is known to refuse help in every agency. Um, so then I contacted the sheriff. Um. And it's Detective, Deputy Detective Rico, he went out and did a well check. He said, there's nothing that we can really do unless we request that this person be removed their trespass from our property. Um, he also suggested that the town first contact our town's attorney. See if there's anything that would prohibit the municipality. Um. From trespassing someone from town property. Um, and I did note that the select board had voted to prohibit camping in one part during, at the uh Travis's meeting. Um, and then I spoke with David, our, our town attorney, David Powell, today, he declined. To represent us in this matter because he said it's not his expertise. He referred me to Brian Monahan, who specializes in municipalities. Um, I also emailed BLCT for advice. Uh. He doesn't seem to be, I, I have Googled it, although that's not a reliable source, but I know that the federal government. Says that you, that towns, it supports towns and evicting people. From camping or trespassing. But the state has different rules because you have to pretty much have a place for them to go, we don't. So, um, I'm just. Hoping that um we get something back from BLCT or, you know. Do you, does the, does the select board want me to take this to another winner, Brian, Brian Monahan, who specializes in.
I mean, while it is cooling down, I feel like we have enough time to wait for BLCT. If they have anything to say. I have any experience with that.
I do know that I've been hearing. Uh, a lot of complaints, a lot of complaints, this person is now standing in traffic. Find stop traffic and. Um. Asking for money.
Well, that's a violation of a different law, the sheriff's department should be made aware of that.
Wait, that's actually.
She's stopped me and my wife several times. Red cameras in the area? Dash cams, cell phones, something?
It's guy, it's not, you know.
Yeah, I know, obviously, um, so one at the town hall able to pick this up?
There is.
I thought there was one on the corner of the building. Towards Good Street. It's an interesting thought, we'll look into that. There's a great big sign, says you're being photo, yeah.
Wouldn't be a bad idea long term for to go in the habit, just in case something happens?
No, certainly, no, I, I'm surprised the post office doesn't have anything that watches their loading docks as well.
I don't know if they have.
Yeah, um, I, the only thing I would say, and I, again, try not to speak as authority on this, but. Having a camera facing a public space, I'm not certain if there are rules around that, we should look into that before we. Say or do anything about that, but we can. Yes, we should certainly look into that, that would be, that would be in the best interest of the town anyway, regardless of. Okay, perfect.
You're only really gonna use them if something happens, not just gonna sit before it.
Of your own liability laws, if you publish video.
I see.
Okay. You, you can use it for response force, but it doesn't amount to much.
Yeah, we should, we should look into whether or not the one on town hall will capture in that direction and if it doesn't, what it would take to put one there. Um, I guess.
Looking out, yeah, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I have, I have some suggestions.
I think law enforcement nationwide, like the urban centers, they will use. Videos. Taken beyond the normal concern range of the camera. I don't think they have any problem doing it.
Yeah, no, probably not.
So I don't know, oh, this is a plot here, so. Kind of accidental coverage. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm surprised across the room isn't have security over there. What they're doing, they should have a security on the outside, that don't.
Where is that?
At the fish store dispensary. It's just probably that their law, they have it down with their law. Yeah, I mean, obviously law enforcement is aware, but law enforcement should be made aware again of. Impeding traffic, I mean, I realize the speed limit is thirty-five, but. It would be tragic if she were to be, if the person were to be in traffic. That would be.
This is, I have not witnessed, I witnessed panhandling, but, you know, asking for money, but not out in the traffic. But this is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Uh, what's the legality of municipalities prohibiting panhandling? Full stop. Be interesting.
Mostly a doom from the party here, the.
There was not much you could do other than well, that's, that's everything too. Half of that is town land, half of that still belongs to Coco, isn't it? Still belongs to her on Arrow Strip and that's to the post office. She's not on that. She's on our property.
If ours doesn't, it doesn't, like runs ours, the batteries. It's, I mean, he did say that he could tow it. And then, you know, where would she go? She would go with the power. There's no fam, so we, we burned through the family and everything. There are no other resources and I did explain that to this person. And they did it there.
Well, yeah, I guess it would be my opinion.
They must still get her to leave. She was doing the same thing in Horaceville. Well, in Hargit, she was on private property.
Oh, okay.
She was on the private property.
I knew Horaceville, I think it was on, it was on the, they were on near the farmer's market. I mean, for a while. I don't know.
Private property makes it a lot easier. Municipal, you know, public property, I'm not sure. I'm surprised that the camping ban isn't enough.
I don't know. That's why, that's why the detective said that they checked it out. I don't know if it would even be an issue because of resources to come back, but I think we should just do our diligence.
Yeah. So I can know, is there something you can do like overnight parking there? Sign, or probably see something like that.
Or no, yeah, we're, you know, being.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's something we could do. I don't know. I'm still of mind. Let's see what BLCT has to say. If they come up with no options, then we probably should make sure that we have some kind of legal background to do whatever it is we need to do.
This law has, it's a kind of a weird law. I mean, it's very, you know, it's so generalized, but it can be applied to camping. To homeless and campers.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very sensitive, very sensitive and tragic thing anyway, you know.
So could I add something?
Yeah.
Okay, so that parking lot, I think it's important to remember that in like snowstorms, if people can't get home, sometimes that parking lot is like a last resort for how you get through the night in a snowstorm. So, you know, an overnight ban might be harmful to people that need to be able to be there. So maybe something longer term, like a certain number of hours there and they have to move. That's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't considered that, but that's, that's a great point.
The other problem is when it comes winter for plowing, that rig's gonna be in the way.
As, as things pull on, especially knowing that it doesn't run, which means it doesn't have heat. Something is gonna have to get, we're gonna have to step in and do something.
November fifteenth, we gotta start plowing, so.
In those places, if you're in the lab, I remember November fifteenth, they start towing stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and to get into a shelter, it's very, very difficult to get into a shelter by December first, because that's when everyone's vouchers reset, like you don't have to claim your time on a voucher between December first and March third. You get free unlimited hotel vouchers, so it gets very competitive at that point. So this, I explained all of this, but I don't think this person is understanding. They just wanna stay with their car. Okay. The MRF grant on the insulation, so the attic insulation finally received the third bid. So now we have keep in mind, we ran to thirteen thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars in funding for the insulation project. Marlin precision foam submitted a bid for forty-four thousand three hundred dollars. And that was actually for the removal and disposal of the fiberglass down the soffits and air sealing the attic floor of one inch closed cell phone and then the balance of R forty-nine in loose fill. Village Builders submitted an estimate for ten thousand five hundred. They just said he'll go in and can foam the lights and extend proper vents and then add twelve inches of fiber to be existing R twenty, which would give us an R sixty-two value. He said that if he needed to do, if we needed to install proper vents, it would cost another eight thousand more. If we wanted them to go in and do it would be about seventeen thousand if we wanted him to go in and kind of lift up the insulation and, and do a different, and then add in fifteen inches of fiber belt. And then Richard Gravel, they would bid for thirteen thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars. He's gonna pull back the fiberglass, add one approximately one inch of Demilac brand spray foam on the flat of the attic to air seal. And then he would lay fiberglass back down and add twelve inches of cellulose, which then would exceed the R sixty value. I'm sorry, this is the one, he is the one who said to remove fiberglass, air sealed, spray with foam and then add fifteen inches of cellulose to bring it to R forty-nine, it would cost seventeen, roughly eighteen thousand.
He's able to do the inch, the existing fiberglass and the loose fill over that for thirteen, thirteen seven?
He's gonna lift up and then lay the fiberglass back down. Put that straight down, lay the fiberglass back down and then add the twelve inches. Reading from his own test.
Yeah.
So I know that the board had given Michael the authority to select bids, to award bids. But I think we would like to award gravel.
Yeah, I think that it's a better product. What Village Builders is proposing to do, just the can foam around the penetrations is fine, but we're only three thousand dollars away from having an inch of closed cell over the entire ceiling surface. I feel like it's a little bit more money, but it's, it's a much better product.
So I'd like to go ahead then and award the bid. It's about four hundred dollars over what we were given in grant funding. However, we are about twelve thousand dollars under on this, the solar, which we may be able to use to put in each vacuum unit in this building, in this room right here. That's the next step, once we know where we are with funding. So I feel pretty good about the four hundred dollar over.
That makes sense.
And this is taking the fiberglass out, one inch foam and fiberglass back.
Fabric glass back down and then twelve inches of loose fill cellulose over that. It was another, what do you say, brought it up to seventeen to remove the fiberglass entirely?
Yeah, he said to remove fiberglass and air seal with spray foam and then add fifteen inch cellulose to bring it to just R forty-nines, about eighteen thousand.
Yeah, so for thirteen seven, we gotta hire our value and while I poke my head in the attic, I didn't see anything egregious wrong with the fiberglass anywhere.
Right, the first time.
Yeah.
Not like home.
Have I told you that story?
Did I have to share just a little bit of my own perspective and guess how I'm spending a lot of time crawling in that fiberglass? Once all of this work is done, anything additional to be done up there gets a lot harder. I'm also trying to picture if you need to get up there and access anything with now the fiberglass up a little bit and then he said twelve inches cellulose up top. That could I don't know how you would get around it because you can't now step on the rafters because there's gonna be a foot on the side of the piece.
Yeah. In that event, we probably would have to have, so in new construction, there are requirements that there are catwalks put in, in places like that. We may have to go that route. How much crawling around up there do you anticipate?
I mean, the only remaining project that I have in mind that I'd like to do is a camera over your head. That's going for looking at documents in particular for DRB. That's the only outstanding thing I have in mind. But I also know with fiber coming into the building soon, there may be a need to run a few wires for that in the ceilings. So I think timing wise, but then who knows what's coming in the future. But I was thinking that maybe adding a couple structures so that you could at least get a regular.
Yeah. Well, and obviously you've spent some time up there, so you know, we could put racing between the, the truss webbing and run a catwalk down, down the middle.
I don't know if they call it a catwalk, it's probably a cat crawl.
The technical term is rattrack.
Rattrack?
I didn't wanna call Jack to them, I knew it was his job, so.
Well, yeah, it does. I'll do what they did for this outlet. You could always run a scare, which is easier, you don't disturb stuff.
Yeah, yeah, the work doesn't, it's difficult, but it's not impossible.
I'll still make it through camera.
Well, at least find out what the cable it needs and have that cable run, they're just bangley.
I don't know that they would start. I would have then, maybe we delay the start on until end of November.
They were, they were gonna wait until the solar was up anyway, I thought.
Yeah, well, it doesn't really matter now, but unless they need to drill. Yeah, I think I told them anyway, probably December first to start.
Yeah, because I thought in order for Jeff to get into the panel, he's gonna have to do some added work.
Okay.
Yeah, having not seen Jeff's exact plan, I don't, I don't know what he's gonna need.
I don't know if that gets too cold. They don't have the line of work in December, but they want cattle, save money, it's cheaper.
He should be able to, that'd be fine.
And you can build a catwalk over it.
Yeah, I mean, put a picture of, right, say, a little. We can install it, which is, just a clock, I'm gonna let that go.
And do we need a motion for this?
If the board has granted me authority, I don't believe we need it.
Highway Department, the one son truck, so we got the truck back. Dillon thinks that, Joey hopefully suggested that we retrofit the old trailer that's in the garage, garage yard to serve as a flatbed for the one son. They got an estimate, it would be two thousand or under to do that. Body on the one son right now is rusty and has holes in it and it will require patching. And Dylan thinks that the flatbed would have more length in it than patching the existing bed. So just, that's just an update. Do you have anything to share, Mike?
Just that I am hoping that we get out of here at a reasonable hour tonight, I'd like to go walk around the truck just to see, because I haven't made a minute to go see what the truck is like. In, in my opinion, for a body to be formal enough where it needs to be replaced with an old trailer, it's gotta be pretty bad. And the other day when I met it on the road, it didn't look at forty miles an hour like it was that bad. Were there any, we don't have any more information on anything else that's wrong with it? Rather wait and see?
Yeah.
Okay. Same story as before, though. Truck is old and decrepit and as a part of this year's highway budget, I assume we're gonna see a line. I'm going up there without witness, but I have that. I'm gonna make sure there's a few more things for our pulse right now.
The brake light is going on again and so we have to have it, I think, take it back to Cal and still and see if that has anything to do with the, the body module, control module. A couple of other things are going on with it, of course. It could be posing a lot of money, so expect that we'll be asking for more repair funds in the next budget, just because we have two older vehicles that we have to live along by the next year or two, so.
Well, there's the, the town truck and then.
Dillon's truck.
We should be ordering that soon.
If you give them the approval, I told him that they'll be coming in top teeth basically.
I thought the schedule that Linda carries around with her said that we needed to take delivery of Dillon's replacement by twenty-eight, which means we should order it next year.
Yeah, so in the spring, you probably, but we can talk about.
Yes.
But we still need this twenty-eight, we have two years and we have to live along too pretty sadly. Just, you know, just very damaged vehicle. Just rusted. I've been getting, there was a lot of interesting intrigue about all of these directional road signs that were appearing throughout the town. I mean, just like, they were just appearing, arrows and curbs ahead. They were just appearing and so I found out that that the state put in for statewide grant, transportation statewide H E S H R R R twenty-five grant. And Walcott was given four days worth of work and so that's what they deemed to come along and install these. They didn't really notify us, which I just find absolutely bizarre and how they decided that Walcott needed directional signage is another mystery, but it was free to us and so there we are. The Cargill Barrett Road salt price has increased eleven dollars and fifty cents per ton, which is now priced at a hundred three dollars and fifty cents per ton. We typically use four hundred fifty tons per year, so that's an increase of five thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars per year. I have been calling around everywhere to see if we can get a cheaper price and really Cargill Barrett is the only company that will service us on multiple occasions throughout the year on a flatbed versus a large truck, which is the only, we can only take flatbed because of the, the design of salt cut. I do know that the state of Vermont had gone out initially about three months ago saying, asking for what towns might want to participate in the statewide salt grant. And I responded yes, but then they, they came back and said it's on hold for the moment. I don't know why. So I think we're just gonna have to buy the fifty-one, you know, increase the budget at least five thousand dollars for salt this year.
Just a quick question about the signings. Have we done an inventory of all the new signs that have been added? Because I'm assuming we're gonna be on hold for containing those in years to come.
I don't know. I just found some, so we're gonna have to, maybe I can get from them in inventory.
And I don't even know if we have, I mean, even a semblance of a pool of what we have, what the town has recently.
Thought pull that together before you go.
Yeah, it'd be nice to put those two things together.
Yeah, that's a good point, but I've been able to do that. We I talked to Larry Furno about actually doing what uh, Michael Reno did last year, the twelve thousand dollars a year, the snow plowing around here using our one ton. And he is interested. Um, he will be cheaper than Reno because he doesn't require a minimum, guaranteed minimum. He just said if there's work, he'll come in, if not, he'll go home. Um, and then the twelve thousand dollars would pay for his work during the week, and then he would be on all three weekends out of four every month. So that every road crew person gets one weekend off per month guaranteed that they can plan on. And then he is paid through the uh, the road budget for that, and he charges twenty-five an hour in the overtime. So, or get it, we're saving overtime, again, like we did last year in the road crew budget. So I just wanted to let you know that if he decides to take the job, I would be asking the select board to approve that, that assignment.
Would we need to advertise that? I, I just genuinely care, I said it.
It's twelve thousand. And, and it's seasonal. I don't know what you're gonna get.
Yeah, and
And I really.
Think we have, this year we budgeted. Okay, so. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have, we weren't obligated to front add a paper.
Are you gonna fast do? And that's not a question, but I'm just saying, it, it like you've interviewed two people already for it.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that we necessarily would have to notice.
Okay. Because it's seasonal.
Yeah. Yeah, I think in years past, we haven't advertised for it, for that time either.
He comes by the right side. And, and it's just that such a niche, niche to fill. He's got a class A license as well, so um, just a good person to have. Uh, if you notice, if you've driven down North Qua- Qua- Road, you'll notice that the uh, cracks in the asphalt on both of the newly paved sessions, um, sections that were paved in twenty twenty-four were filled. Uh, they were sealed, there was a little bit of a missing out, so we ended up spending ninety-five hundred dollars to seal those sections. But the guy did a really good job. He went over and above, like really fill up and even did the edges, so. That's done, but we are down ten thousand in our asphalt budget. And I'm just hoping that, that we carried over last year's budget. Who's supposed to?
I think we did.
Um, that's all I have. I don't have anything from Linda about CCS.
Yeah, so next on our agenda was our select board review in action. So the request from CCS to use sixty-four school street to stage for their bridge project. Like Michelle just said, Linda is the one who was checking into the homeownership management.
Yes.
Uh, to see whether or not that was approved use. We don't have that information.
Actually, that on the site on nine nineteen, I just don't have the results.
And he is spending that information.
Right, so I think, uh, if the board would like to allow that, we should probably make a motion to approve that pending. I'll make a motion proving any information from the O. Okay. Any seconds?
A second.
For a discussion. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cool, you got your conditional approval. Um, gentle reminder of the October eighth building and floodplain meeting. It's in this room at six. Yeah, that's what the calendar says. Um, just gonna be going over with, uh, I think Seth Jensen, yes?
I'm surprised they're even considering allowing any structure in floodplain anymore.
Well, so here's the, here's the thing. You could always develop a floodplain, provided that it wasn't a buyout property, that it wasn't already purchased by FEMA. As long as you meet certain regulation requirements, whatever, it's all ready playing in our zoning docs as well as in what the state will allow and all these other different things. Uh, I mean, over common sense. Well, I think that the purpose of this meeting next Wednesday is to just have an authority on the matter, explain what those requirements are. So, I for one am stoked for it. I'm excited to hear what Seth has to say. Moving on to review of the final edits for the local personnel policy. Everybody got a chance to look at those? Any opposition to, uh, that's there? Michelle?
Yeah, the, the final changes that were made after post discussion were, uh, just Linda had felt that, um, we were calling sick time and um, personal, so instead of sick leave, it was to be sick leave slash personal leave. And then Linda wanted the very, there were a lot of restrictions on the use of that leave. And um, Linda said it was too restrictive. And so I dropped the restrictions on the use of that leave, the very, very spelled out restrictions. Because I think to go on that, you know, to become less restrictive, we're not gonna get a trophy from the state by changing those restrictions.
And I think it was last meeting, we discussed whether or not we're gonna have a lawyer review it, and now decided that we didn't need that. There wasn't enough of a change. So I'm gonna pass it around for signatures. Do we need an actual motion on that? I think we, uh, we do, fair. I would love to hear a motion to allow us to sign the personnel maintenance. Second?
I'll second.
For a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass it around for signatures.
Uh, down the property. I'll let you take, you, you second it, Craig.
And updates, I don't have any updates. Any updates? Updates? Do I have any updates? Any news? Joe, nothing?
We've got a little last up.
I got a little stuff. I got nothing. I guess we'll just sit here and do our checks as we go home.
Inside.
They did.
See the house going down?
East by death, a little by a little. Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty good update. The uh, Oscars, Oscars. For those of you that don't drive by it every day. It's moving away slowly.
Get rid of every piece of wood, though, and, and woodbell, and sanding.
Yeah. Yeah, certainly not the uh, well, let's just call it incredibly efficient, that is used in North Qua- Qua- Village, but that also comes to the side. Unless you guys wanna stay here for the rest of your lives, I'm looking for somebody that wants to go home.
There is some nuts and candies from Girl Scouts here.
Hang on, there's Girl Scout.
And there's also stuff online that you can buy. I do have the last picture and read.
They say you're gonna go home.
Considering, unless you're a man. Just show her a drive to Orlando. This is my night collection, and he has an elephant backseat.
I mean, I love to drive, I'll take you wherever you want to go.
Oh, agitation is, is so interesting. She's a little learner. Coming on forty years, America.
You're not gonna do it, are you? You're gonna make me sit here. You're not gonna, you're not gonna do it. You're gonna make me sit here. He said.
Ooh, ooh, I second it. I second. Hey, oh, all right. You've got the off track there. It's all your fault. Only baseball Ryan's partner here.
Perfect. Can you grab one? You feel better?